I will make that report we met last Thursday. I came to office with Michelle and Martha and myself. We looked at the reports. Everything looked great. Something that we did touch on, because all year I watched the percentage of salaries and benefits to budget. And being at eighty percent is just like, how is that possible? And we finally kind of had an aha moment, Michelle and myself. And the reason that we're at that eighty percent is because we were able to budget our cash carry corporate last year. And so if you were to budget salaries and benefits to what our actual amount of the state is, I should know that term by now.
S E G.
S E G. Thank you. Listen to you. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be at eighty percent. And so I say that to say, while it looks great, it's because we do such a great job physically managing our plans. And that's the only reason that we're at that eighty percent. I asked Michelle, and she might talk about it in a little bit, but our budget meeting that we just had, if we just took salary and benefits to our entire budget, that's eighty-nine percent of our budget. And so the only way that this works in our district is with good physical management and by being able to, I don't want to say that the state did this on purpose, but in the past, your numbers look a lot slower. And now that we can budget that number, and it's only been last year and this year, we look more lucrative, which is not the case. We are just better physically managed. We looked at some other spending that's never concerned. If we have questions, they always have answers for us. We talked about the budget, and again, I just want to just really tip my hat to Michelle McKing. She's come so, such a long ways as the helm of our Director of Finance, and I love working with her. So, thank you. Threat Assessment Committee report. Mr. Flores, do you have anything for us?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm a member of the board. We met Friday.
Is that correct, Mr. Flores?
And we met with regards to what Mr. Hopkins talked about with the survey results of the armed security guards. We also met regarding the hoax that Silver Schools and other schools throughout the state and nation received, who I think was basically, we live in a place where there was Navarson, this school where he shot that day. They ultimately arrested somebody in Florida, I think, around that day. But I just wanted to, my part, I, we talked about the results, and I told the committee that I appreciate everyone's hard work, because I think it's been a long thought-out process by Mr. Hopkins and everyone involved. And I told the committee that, I think that was my main reason for joining board again six years ago, was because of the lack of security. And I know at a point now, hopefully, that moving forward, and unfortunately, there was another shooting day in Farmington, a mass shooting. So it's just, it's, we have to prepare our students for the reality of the world that we live in today, Saturday. And that's what we're trying to do. But I had to leave for a couple of minutes to have a phone call with Mr. Robbins. I'll yield the rest of my time to you, because I know you guys talked about some other issues. And then I came back shortly thereafter.
All right.
It was virtual.
I do copy one.
Okay, I'll just start from far away. We also ended up talking about our graduations and what we're going to be putting in place for graduation for security, to go ahead and make sure that both at Cliff and also at the high school, Silver High, that we have a good graduation. We also ended up talking about how well the FBI, they informed us of an actual threat that ended up taking place at about eleven o'clock. We never had to move any further, because the FBI acted immediately on this threat and ended up isolating the incident. And so we were very thankful for that. We were brought in after the fact, but all the information was provided for us. They were able to go ahead and monitor communications, and they addressed it immediately. So those were the topics that we ended up talking about.
Thank you. Anything else to add, Mr. Flores?
No, sir.
Board President is next on the agenda. And we are going to award our, our New Mexico School Boards Association Excellence in Student Achievement. This award is an award that we are given opportunity as school boards across the state to select people in our community, in our district, that really, well, just to...
Madam President, members of the board, the New Mexico School Board Association announced recipients of the 2023 Excellence in Student Achievement Awards. These awards sponsored by NSBA, presented to individuals selected by us, or by the board, excuse me, not us, who have played an important role in improving student achievement in their local school district. The first recipient I'd like to ask to come up is Ms. Drennan. Ms. Drennan? Crystal Drennan, are you here?
Excuse me, I just made a mistake on the floor.
Ms. Drennan, if you don't mind, I'm going to speak about you for just a moment. Yeah. Excellent. As a parent, Ms. Drennan has been involved at every level, championing and caring for all of our students. She volunteers time, she provides emotional support, and when often unspoken, she also tends to volunteer out of her own pocket to support the needs of students in various programs. She's given above and beyond to all of our students, as well as supporting staff when they need it. If you want to know, just stop by an office, whether it's Harrison, whether it's Silver High School, if there is anything to be needed, Ms. Drennan is going to be the first one to volunteer to walk in and give up that time. Even if her child is not participating in that extracurricular activity, she's somebody's mom that day. And so we can't tell you how much we appreciate that. She's an excellent example of parent involvement in our schools, and it is an absolute pleasure for Silver Schools to recognize her as Silver School Student Achievement recipient for this school year. Miss Drennan behind the voice. And in several day meetings, too. Next up, we'd like to recognize Mr. Victor O'Hawke. Speaking candidly, there isn't a role too big or too small on any given day for Mr. O'Hawke. As a director for the district, he organizes, he plans, and then he follows through with detailed precision when it comes to executing those plans. He is well-prepared, he gets right down into the trenches to get the job done. If you want to look for Mr. O'Hawke at the beginning of the morning, every day it's six forty-five, seven o'clock, he's here organizing and making sure, literally, our buses run on schedule, right? He's the person who coordinates that. At the same time, he runs over to the maintenance department to make sure that the meetings get headed up and everyone has their assignments. He's then back here updating Mr. Alvarez or myself on whatever the issues are of the day. Then he's back grabbing a toolkit, running out to a campus to fix a plumbing or work with, work with Mr. Sorrell on a project. That includes being in town, driving out to Cliff to do painting. If there's a project to be done, Mr. O'Hawke is the guy to get it done. I don't even look at that, I just go with the book. Planning meetings with contractors, painting numbers on fields. So the, all of you who got the pleasure of watching our football team and appreciating the fields and how immaculate they look, when I say he handcrafts those letters on the numbers on the field, he literally does that, right? On top of everything else. He's an intricate part of cabinet and district leadership. He has a keen understanding of instructional delivery and building needs, which gives us an added advantage when it comes to anticipating the needs of our schools. Reality is, if you've ever had the pleasure or have a child who had the pleasure of going through math at Silver High School, at the pleasure of having Mr. O'Hawke, you know how amazing a teacher is. So on top of everything else, having been administrator, he also teaches. I think he taught at the high school level, right? Am I correct on that? And he's still teaching at the collegiate level. I don't know when he sleeps, I really don't. Following up with that, he's often the first one in and the last one out in our district. He is the very definition of a servant leader. You're an excellent example of why the New Mexico School Board Association bestows this Student Achievement Award. Thank you, sir, for your work.
The next item on our agenda is the first reading of the Army School Security Guard Policies. It is provided for you in your packet. You should have had time to review that policy just for clarification purposes. The policy will look much like what you see in our policy handbook, which is what we would adopt. And then the things that Mr. Hopkins worked with his committee at length, and Mr. McMillan and Mr. Flores, that was everyone's input on how it would be run in our schools, so more of, not a policy, but more of a procedure. That is both in your handbook or in your board packet. So this will be the first reading. Lisa has worked out, has reached out to Policy Services to make sure that it is in alignment with our policies, as well as obtain a policy number, and we should be able to have that for next meeting. Any questions or comments? Okay. Next item on our agenda is board comments. So I'm just again, going to thank everyone for attending this very important meeting. We love getting to honor our students and our staff and our administrators that help make Silver Schools this wonderful place to work and to attend to school. It's an honor to serve as a school member and just have a front row seat to all the things that are wonderful that are happening in our school. This time of year, it's crazy and super exciting, and there's just tons of celebration, which of course, we join our seniors as they about, as they're about to leave us and go out and explore the world, and we're so excited for them. We're really, we're celebrating with all of the teams, whether it's academic clubs or sports clubs. Shout out to our softball team that just brought home the state championship, which is super exciting. We had some high qualifiers at the state track meet as well. Silver Schools really is just a place where everyone is welcome, and they can find their niche, and they can excel if they put in the hard work. And so I'm very, very proud to be a part of that. Again, thank you. And I want to turn over to my vice president, Audrey.
Hi, I just wanted to say a couple words. One is definitely congratulations to all the sports and activities teams out there going out and representing the Silver School District, and one above and beyond. It's neat to see our kids so excited and taking pride in that and representing themselves. So congratulations to everybody on that. I wanted to say congratulations to our graduates. This is a huge milestone for them and their families. I just wish you all the best, and also, you know, during the celebration time, please stay safe. The other thing, I just, you know, the armed guard thing is something that's just going to be an evolution, and something we continue to discuss, and I think it's a topic that people, you know, it's quickly emotionally charged. And so the one thing that's really important to me, that I think we've seen a lot of, is feedback from the community, both in the survey response, but also in individual emails to all of us and board members. And, you know, I think it's really important to have a full spectrum of feedback and have that insight, so we know what our constituents are wanting, but also to see the perspective from either side, because I think they're all valid points that we need to bring to the table, both for short-term, you know, satisfaction, but also, you know, the priority at the end of the day is safety of our students. And so that comes with a multitude of layers, and there are different moving pieces to that. So I just want to say I really appreciate the feedback from our constituents, and please continue to provide that for us, because it helps to guide our management of things and helps us to provide the experience our students and our parents are looking for.
Thank you. This is an exciting time of year. We've got, we had so many awards and recognitions here at our board meeting, but also, as mentioned, state championships. I think we had five or six medals in track, of course softball won state, lots of curriculars at N H D, Skills USA, all moving on to nationals. So it's, it's a really fun and exciting time. Later this week, we'll congratulate the graduates and their families, and it's a really neat time to be representing Silver Consolidated Schools, both Silver High School and Quillby School. Looking forward to the graduations, and thank you all.
Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the committee. I'm going to repeat everything you said, but yes, congratulations to all athletics, especially the softball team. A special thank you to the teachers. I know it's been a tough year. Thank you to administrators. I know you guys are ready for a break, and students are ready for a break. I hope you guys enjoy your summer, because it's going to go by really quickly, and we'll be back in August, starting the new year. Congratulations to all the graduates. My youngest is graduating, so it's bittersweet for me. She's one of six, you're my last one. It's not just because of me and my wife, but we'll still be okay. I want to say I appreciate all the letters of support, like Dr. Diaz said, for the armed security guards, and I appreciate feedback or the different opinions on the armed security guards. But it gets been said here already, there's already two surveys that have gone out, and it's close to ninety percent each time. So at the same time, we're entitled to our own opinion, but we also represent constituents out there that have spoken. And they are saying, we want our schools armed with a security guard. Cameras and other services are just layers protection, but like I read in one of the letters, and it was a good point, all a camera is going to do is record the mayhem. That's all it's going to do. It's not going to stop someone from shooting another victim. And I think it's, this isn't the time for, but it's my comment, but it is long overdue. In my opinion, it should have been done years ago. But we are where we're at, and I think we're progressing forward to it. And I would venture to guess or hope or pray, whatever you want to say it, that we will have armed security guards by sometime next school year. You know, I know we have to go through the training, and the equipment, and the tests, but hopefully by January, we'll have armed security guards, maybe sooner. But anything, I think, is obviously better than nothing. Thank you for everyone that worked on it. Thank you all.
All right, next item on our agenda is open public comments, and I have seven. So we're going to welcome you to the podium. I will call you by name. We limit these to three minutes, so I'm going to, I'll have a timer. Sorry, sorry. First open public comment for tonight, Ms. Judy Ward.
I just must thank you. I am Judy Ward. I am absolutely flabbergasted by what has happened here tonight, because I'm a nineteen fifty-nine graduate of Silver High School, but it's really Western High School. And at Western, the boys had guns in their pick-up at school. We were not afraid, and there was never one incident, of which I'm aware. Doors at home were unlocked, fences around homes were wired. My family members went hunting regularly. I saw them clean their guns and take care of them and teach us gun safety. I've never even lived in a house without a gun, except for a very short time when I was alone, and then I bought a gun. In all my years, the guns never went off by themselves. The times have changed. Fentanyl deaths, teenage suicides are skyrocketing. Schools have perimeter fences with a guard, the cameras, the metal detectors, the locked doors, safety measures unheard of sixty-five years ago. That breaks my heart. Our country has innumerable mental health issues. We know that, and we do not deny it at all. Families with both a father and a mother seem to be rare. God has been banned from many schools and businesses, but we blame the guns. I'm going to stop, because tonight was truly mind-boggling for me to see these kids that have done so much in perhaps an atmosphere of fear, and perhaps wondering what tomorrow's going to bring, because we have had a school shooting right out here, and you know that. But I believe, God help me, that you will take care of our kids. You know what they need, you know what the community wants, and I implore you to do what you have to do. Please, arm the guards, teach them proper training, give them what they need, give them the tools they need, and if necessary, go out to our retired military community, bring them in, get them some training, but protect our kids at all costs. It's only money, but get them the mental health care, too. We have Tucasa, but they haven't even been able to totally staff it, I understand. There's five million dedicated for another building, but how are we going to staff the mental health that's going to be, the counselors are going to be required? So please, take the first steps. You know that the police were told to stand down in El Paso. You know that the shooter in Tennessee looked for the school that was the least protected. So I beg you, do what you have to do, do the right thing, and God bless you for taking care. I'm sorry, I'm going to take one more minute to thank you for what you are doing personally for this school, for these fabulous kids that I saw too. God bless.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Next up, this is Rhonda Billings.
Next word to the board, Mr. Hopkins. I'm Rhonda Billings, and I want to thank you for your time and service to our community and Silver Schools, and thank you for allowing public comment and having this important matter of arming our security guards on the agenda tonight and continuing to move into a positive direction. I love the Silver Schools and spent seven years as a student here myself back in nineteen hundreds. I've also been involved in the Silver Schools as a parent, employee, and now as a grandparent, continually since nineteen eighty-seven, and I witnessed the many needed changes to and layers of protection added, and I thank all of those who have and continue to be responsible. I thank, I'm thankful for the dialogue with the policy and who made me for another much needed layer of safety, armed security guards. Last week, there was the threat, turned into, turned out to be a hoax, thank goodness, but it was taken seriously. What happened? Social workers weren't called, but rather men and women in blue with guns. Someone brought up in a meeting that students may be frightened if security guards were wearing guns. I asked my grandson what he thought of that, and his statement was, we have their officers. Who are they going? We love them. I'm not scared of that. It was brought up at the last school board meeting that additional mental resources are needed. That may be, but my question is, how are we going to identify those who may commit a horrific act of cutting down our children? Can we make them get help? Can law enforcement do anything before a crime is committed? No. Mr. Hopkins said, an armed security officer's sole job would be to add another layer of security, to identify, engage, and stop a threat. With someone like that in the house, we have the potential of a violent act being stopped within a minute or two. It could stop innocent lives from being taken. That is a huge advantage, and I would be in support of that. The question was asked about other duties security officers couldn't perform if they were armed. My answer to that is, how was it done before we had armed security guards? What's more important? I would say the safety of our children. No, we don't think arming our security guards is the sole solution. Neither are cameras, locked doors, mental resources, social workers, or... or anything else for that matter. But we still have those layers working together. Armed security guards is not the end-all, be-all, but it is another important added layer of protection for our children and staff. Every minute is crucial. Every minute is crucial when stopping a shooter from taking innocent lives. I can't think of a school shooting that's been stopped without a firearm being used. Thank you again for all you do, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hopkins. Next up, this is Julie Meehan.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
You get it.
My name is Julie Meehan, and I taught here for twenty-five years before I retired. My kids went to school here and loved every minute of it. And I know many of you. And something that really bothered me tonight was, I was a CT teacher also, okay? And I saw all these kids out here, and they were, you know, giving their performance and getting their awards. Where's the parents? There wasn't very many parents. It really made me sad. But it's indicative of what I saw when I was in school. You hardly ever see parents, and that's that. Let me get to the point that I'm here for. I am definitely one of those that is in favor of armed guards. We talked about it over the years when I was here. It came up all the time. The one time that we had an incident where the child died, we talked about it at length, but never did anything. We did, you know, a Benson, we did this and that, but we never really did any. We do a lot of talk, but no action, okay? So what I'd like to say is, I know that an armed guard is what we're talking about, but an armed guard with a uniform becomes a target for that person coming in. That's the first thing they're gonna find out where they are. That's the first person they're going to get. So what we discussed when we were here, I remember, was training staff who would be qualified to be concealed carrying people. Nobody knows who they are, but they know that there might be someone like that here. That is, to me, a huge deterrent for someone coming in thinking, well, you know, we have signs in our yards that say, "Security." Do we really have that security? Well, we don't know. Does that house have security? I'm not sure. But at school, we have signs that say, "No firearms allowed." Ah, guess what? That's the first place that they're gonna think, look, it's a soft target. Why don't we take those signs down and put up, "Staff may be armed"? Seems to me that would be just a small deterrent. In the meantime, while we're trying to figure out how we're gonna do all this. But I would like to stress that, in addition maybe to uniformed guards, could we please also consider the concealed carried staff? Because I know there's a lot of people that are qualified. The kids are our gold, they're our future, they are so important to all of us. And I appreciate the fact that you guys asked the staff, you asked the kids, and you asked the parents. And it goes a long way to find out what we want, instead of just a few select people deciding what we might need. So I appreciate all of you, love you much, and God bless. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Meehan. Next up, Carol Miller.
Hello, my name is Carol Miller. Pretty new to Silver City. My name is Carol Miller. We're fairly new, my husband and I are fairly new to Silver City. We've been here three years now. And been able to come to some of the ballgames and watch the children, the kids here. And what I saw tonight was so warming to me. I was excited for them and for the presentations that they had and the awards that they got. Very happy about that, and I know that as a school board that you are very involved in that, and I appreciate that. Short, I am simply saying that I am for, I felt a little funny about coming up here and saying anything after we heard the percentages of the... Yes. And I just, I am very happy to know that you all are taking into consideration the protection of our kids. I have two little grandkids that are, will eventually be in this system, and I am just very happy that you are really out for them to be protected, to watch over them, and I thank you for that, and God bless you all.
Next up, Linda Beatty.
Hello, and my name is Linda Beatty. I have been here in Grant County for about thirty-five years, and I'm a retired teacher. And my kids went to San Lorenzo and La Plata and Silver High, and I did my student teaching here at Silver High in ninth grade and eleventh grade, I think, way back in the late eighties. So I love this area, this is my home. And I was so impressed tonight with all these students here, being a teacher myself. And the teachers that lead these kids are just gold. I can see that you've got some really good teachers here. But I do wanna give my support tonight in favor of the armed security guards at the school. To me, it's just common sense. In the world that we live in, the reality is that schools have just become a target for violence. And there are disturbed and sick people that want to harm innocents. And we have these big, large groups of innocents all together at once every day, you know, and they're just a target. This is the world we live in. I've been exposed to some of the crime here in Grant County, and I know that there's a lot of crime, there's a lot of gang activity, there's a lot of drug activity. And if you wanna see another, a dark side of this town, just go hang out in Penny Park at dusk, when all the kids have gone home with their parents, and then the night people come in. And I'd even gone down to the police station after seeing some stuff there. I was just shocked, and I says, "Why don't you just send a patrol around the park once in a while?" They said, "We don't have the time to be monitoring the park all the time." I mean, they were saying that they were short. So I'm really encouraged by the surveys of the people that have responded in favor of this policy. And I know that as elected people from the community, that you wanna represent your constituents. And so I just thank you for the work that you do. I think this was a great meeting to come to with all the student awards. That was really fun to watch. And so I thank you for your time.
Next up, Helen E. Your last name, E. Effy?
Yeah, that's me.
That's you? How'd you get that one?
You!
Thank you, sir.
I hope you don't mind if I don't use a microphone. I've spent a bit, great deal of time reading over the proposed policy. And one of the things that really strikes me is, the sole purpose is to shoot somebody. Now, my experience has been, not everybody that comes to attack a school is stupid. If the armed guard is over here, they're gonna go over there. So I think we need to take into consideration some of the other things, like keeping doors locked and things like that. The other thing is, they need some training on when they can fire. Are they gonna fire in a full classroom? There was just a young mother in Texas that was killed because somebody, an armed citizen, was shooting at people breaking into cars, and one of the bullets went through the wall of the house and killed her. You need to take a look at that, when you can fire a gun, and when not to. I had some other questions on the policy. I have my reading glasses on, so I can read them. The question is about the school-issued firearm. What happens at the end of the school day? Does the firearms bay here? It does, in a lock cabinet, I'm assuming. And how much ammunition is issued? Does an officer have the ability to fire fifteen rounds? Is what recently happened. Or hopefully, they'll be accurate enough in shooting their weapon that they can hit the damn target. The other thing had to do with the training and screening of applicants. I looked at a lot of the questions that you had, the things that they would have to go through, background check, things like that. Nowhere in there did I see contacting former employers. Nowhere in here did I see anything about bullying. Here in New Mexico, officers can have trouble at one police department and go to the one right down the road and get hired because their record doesn't necessarily follow them. So I think we need to spend a lot more time looking at the individuals and researching their past experience. The other thing about vests, all officers will be issued a vest. My question is, would they wear it under or over their shirt? If they wear it over their shirt, like many of the police officers, like the police officers here in town doing around, it really is intended to intimidate. So why should that officer be intimidating to the students in the school? The only person we want them to be intimidating is someone who wants harm. But my conclusion after the meeting tonight is that this is pretty much a done deal. And I think be careful what you wish for. Thank you.
Next up is Cindy Donovan.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Donovan. This terrifies me to speak in public. People that know me don't believe that, but it does. I wanna thank you, board and Madam President. Thank you for having this opportunity to share our thoughts. I just came here to share mine, my husband's, and several others that are afraid to speak, and it pays for these others to get up here because they're scared too. But we are fully supporting the fact that you guys have asked and maybe thinking about having armed guards, and one hundred percent, one hundred percent support that. So I wanna start out by asking you, we consider money kind of an important thing in our lives, and dollar bills and that fact is going around. When you see money getting transported from one place to another, or to the United States Treasury, from one bank to another, how is that money transported? In an armed guarded car. Is that not correct? With people that are wearing vests and have arms, and are carrying weapons with them. So is money important? Absolutely. But what is by far more valuable to us? Our precious, irreplaceable children. So if we can honestly have armed trucks and armored guards and armored vehicles transporting our money, do you not think that we should have armored people in place here at our schools where we have a huge amount of our most priceless assets? I can't think of nowhere else that it's more important to have. And I tend to agree, I heard these ideas of army staff members that are trained, and a little bit of conversation was brought up about how much ammunition can they have, yada, yada. That will all be taken, I'm certain, with very, very well-detailed training. So I am here to think, to ask you to continue to go forth, and I think your surveys represented the constituents of this county, you know, obviously to some degree, people that are caring and people that took the time to answer it very clearly, and I think it spoke volumes of what the people here are asking. I too am a nineteen hundreds graduate of Silver Consolidated Schools. I graduated from Cliff High School in nineteen seventy-six. And we too had always the pickups there, the guns in the back window, never a fear of them. I think that tactic of saying they're gonna be fearful, they admire. Most children I know, and all my grandchildren come through here, and plus all of us, admire a police officer when he comes in, and we certainly don't look at them with fear because they have a weapon on them. So back in nineteen seventy-six, the weapons were in the back of the truck. It was not ever used as a fearful tactic, and I certainly don't think it's anymore so now. So I just ask you to continue to listen to what your constituents and the people, the parents, the grandparents, and the members of this community, we've been here for life, and we're asking you to not allow this school or any of our schools to be a soft target. Please, we should do everything above and beyond to protect our kids. So we thank you guys all for your allowing us to speak, and God bless each and every one of you. Remember, our kids are more important than our money.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. That concludes the open public comment that I have. Was there anyone that didn't get a chance to fill out a form? We will have another section later on in our agenda. If you feel like you would like to speak during that session, please feel free to find a form out at the sign-in, and we can get you in the next section of our open public comment. Thank you for all of those that attended and brought forth your more comments. All right, action items. Number seven, consent agenda and approval of budget finance purchasing. Ms. Michelle McKee.
Thank you again, everybody, this evening for coming. And now as we look at our consent agenda, we have, I have several, several items on my agenda for tonight. The first being approval of our checks written in the month of April. They totaled three million, ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. I have several budget adjustment requests that I am asking for approval from our board tonight. We have received our FY twenty-one, twenty-two carryover and final allocation for our Title I budget in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, for which I seek your approval. I have a transfer bar in our SR two funds. The bar will be made in order to be able to purchase additional interactive displays for our classrooms, for our teachers. I have a budget adjustment request for our operational budget to reduce the budget by thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars for our final adjusted audited cash balance. We have our food services account, which, same thing. We have our final adjusted cash balance, and there is an increase to that budget of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and one dollars. I have our athletics account, which we have an increase to that budget for our final adjusted cash balance, and the increase is five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. We have our non-instructional support, what we call our trust accounts in our district, and our final adjusted cash balance would increase that budget by fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Our Medicaid budget has a budget increase for the final adjusted cash, audited cash balance of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. We have our SB nine fund. We have our SB9 fund, which based on the final adjusted audited cash balance is a reduction of $19,355. And then our final budget adjustment request for the evening is another allocation or the final allocation of our carryover and final amount from PED for our Title IV student success supplements for academic achievement. And that is an increase to the budget of $12,952. And then we go on to a very good list of our donations. We would be, we miss, and oops, I almost forgot, our bids and proposals. We have our bid for our staff fire alarm system. We have the sole and therefore winning bid from Freedom Southwest in the amount of $241,411.84. And then we have a very long and wonderful list of donations from our community. We have AZNM Property Holdings, which is McDonald's, that has donated $1,000 to our Silver High tennis team and also $3,000 to our Silver High NHD. We had Beck Family Dental who donated to Silver High Tennis $500 and to La Plata NHD $3,000. We have our Grant County Golf Association, which donated $500 to our Cliff Golf team. We have Horizon Home Health Incorporated, who donated $1,000 to La Plata NHD. We have Dr. Wachuku, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that second name. Who donated $2,000 to our La Plata NHD team. We have Seth and Rebecca Traeger, who donated $500 to our La Plata NHD team. We have Silver City Moose Lodge, who donated $500 to our Silver High basketball team. Southwest Adolescent Group donated $500 to La Plata Middle School and $500 to Silver High NHD. Wells Fargo Bank donated $1,500 to our Skills USA, the Silver High Auto Class. We had Searing Sherpa and Gishor Shethra? Sorry. That gave $500 to La Plata NHD. We had Sandra Post and Adam Offit, who donated $1,500 to Silver High National Skills USA Competitors. We have Richard and Rocky Hickson, who donated $930 to Silver High Skills USA. And last but definitely not least, Timothy Clark, who donated $500 to our Silver High NHD. And for all of these things, we seek your approval tonight.
No conflicts of interest or disposal? No.
No.
I have a motion. Motion by Dr. Diaz. Okay, by Mr. McMillan. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Michelle, you mentioned an increase in the food budget. And I think you said $280,000?
Yes, that is the, once we audited the final cash, when I build those budgets, I'm allowed to put some of the, or estimate the cash balance to go into those. In that one, we had an additional $284,101 in the final cash, the audited cash that was put into the student tuition account.
So is that gonna go towards food or towards equipment?
It goes towards food. We generally don't buy equipment out of the food services account.
So definitely it would be an approval on our food?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. All right, do you have a motion in a second? Did we get that? Okay. Somebody has recorded that? Okay, perfect. Any further discussion?
Madam President, just many thanks to all our community donations this week, this month. Many thanks to our donations this month.
Yes, thank you for our donation. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item B, Transportation. Mr. Victor Oaxaca, our Transportation Director, welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm gonna stand up and move around some of the dedication.
Yeah, I just moved around.
Please, will you sleep?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, all school board members. Superintendent Oaxaca, Associate Superintendent Miss Roberts, and Mrs. Berus. She's out there driving somewhere. Mrs. McCain and Mrs. South, thank you for having me. Thank you for the recognition. I honestly want to say, you know, the 80 movie, Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure. I'm not worthy, I'm not worthy. I mean, yeah, Mrs. Bynum is in the little theater earlier, you have Mrs. Beru, Mr. Thompson, you have Mrs. Meehan in here, we have fellow colleagues in here. So, yeah, I appreciate the recognition. All right, so I believe the first item of, we need to address is our next school year's bus contracts. We were finally awarded to the state, we're funded. So we have it front of you in your packet at some point somewhere. We have our bus contracts, we'll be up to come in school year for the 2023, 2024 school year for Mangus Valley, Cherry Farm, the Cliff, and Luthier Transportation. Once we solidify or get a little more detail as far as how we're gonna be funding our pre-K program next year, because it's gonna be funded differently, so you are aware, we'll get that contract going for the start of the school year as well. So we ask for your approval in review of those contracts. Our next item, I believe, is the NMDOT LGRF. So NMDO, Mexico Department of Transportation Local Government Work Fund. As you can see, we're looking to complete the paving project at Harris and Smith. Last summer in 2002, we paved the entryway, which is labeled 2022 in blue. This summer, starting probably the first week of June, hopefully I was waiting for confirmation of when they'll actually break ground and get on campus. But they should be completing, getting started on the green area for the parking lot, for the staff parking lot, 2023. And this year's grant application for the 2024 completion of that entryway. It shows right there that the project estimate was roughly about $150,000. Typically, you request 75% of that from the state, which would have been about $111,000, which meant that our leftover contribution, our leftover share for Silver Schools would have been 37. As you recall, last year, that's what we pretty much met us with last year. We have about 75 to 80% return or request was met. However, this year, because there's a little bit of extra, I guess, people reaching into the pot, and the pot was a little bit smaller, we were able to, or we were awarded $65,000. So this comes clear to complete the project. Out of our HB construction, we'll go ahead and finish that project by contributing the remaining balance of $83,000. But nonetheless, next summer, we're hoping to complete that project for Harris and Smith.
Any questions for Mr. Oaxaca?
And as you can see, if you haven't been on to Harris and Smith, off on the left, that's pretty much where we are right now as far as the deterioration in that area. And that's where our buses and our staff drive through periodically, daily. Any questions there? All righty, our next item is to go over our current. And if you don't mind, if you can kind of zoom in. Somewhere in your packets is our maintenance, kind of recap on where we are currently and where we're going, hopefully in the near future. Do we start off with Harrison? Is that the first one? All right, so our first campus, Silver Consolidated Schools. We have Silver Scholars. So just this school year, we've installed new HVAC units to the campus. We will add the units to our district train management system. And in case you're not familiar with that, I just updated the system because we have requested HVAC through 8:00. So if you saw me open up my tablets, I extended the HVAC till about 9:15, if you guys need it. So just so you guys know, that's how it operates. You request it and it's what, delivered. All right, sometimes. Yeah. Officially, at Silver Scholars, we'll be installing a new fire alarm system. We will have to go up for that bid. Hopefully, we'll get that also finalized and in place before the start of the school year. At Sixth Street, we'll be updating their train controls because we'll have it updated. So we'll update that system at Sixth Street. GW Stout, as we've discussed numerous times in the past in board meetings, we'll be looking for the new HVAC project. Waiting on pre-construction meeting from AC Architects to confirm when those items, those units are coming in, available. So that way, we'll, we know we can start, instead of breaking ground, we're breaking the roofs and penetrating, so that way we can go ahead and start removing and replacing existing HVAC units. Also, we just, with your approval, we'll be awarding the fire alarm system to Southwest, Freedom Southwest, so that way they can install the fire alarms. I heard today from Mr. Bill Soro that they look to, hopefully, if approved, have those units in place and the system in place, hopefully by the middle of July. So we'll get started. We've installed new handrails to the north of the admin and library area. We had a couple of incidents where we had staff and students slip or fall on the gravel, so we went ahead and met those needs. Good thing we got a negative report on the mold this past winter. We had some mold reported, actually, where I actually signed, I mediated myself. We had a negative report from Havana Southwest, or just Havana Industries, actually, to that storage room of the office this past winter. At Harris and Smith Elementary, we'll be installing a new PA system. Once again, once they confirm when their equipment arrives, that should also take place this summer. We'll receive a new roof coating to the newer classroom wing. One corner will receive a new metal roof. Staff parking lot in yellow, that's what's going, it's ongoing. Staff parking lot will continue this summer and hopefully the next summer as well. We confirmed that the entire campus, unfortunately, we had a little incident on the campus earlier this spring. But fortunately, that confirmed that our entire gas system to, that runs through the entire campus, has zero leaks. You know, when you, when you pressurize the entire system, our campus outside, you think, oh my gosh, this is not gonna be good. And within two hours, they confirmed that we were solid there, so peace of mind there. Rosso Barrios, we resolved the train unit concern, hopefully forever. We'll continue monitoring going into next winter. Multipurpose building will also receive a new roof, receive a roof coating. Can't say new roof, right? We're just gonna reco, extend the life for another 10 years. At La Plata, we're looking to do a new paint scheme throughout the campus, but we'll be looking at just the immediate area around the library and the main hallways. The middle school received $31,000 out of our SB9 account, $31,151 in new weight room equipment and a new paint scheme. New boilers will be on our purchase radar immediately next year, once we receive our funds for next school year. So then we'll have those installed and in place before the start of the winter. The bandroom will also receive a new, we'll also receive a roof coat. At Silver High School, currently, and that's in yellow because it's ongoing, they've currently received $24,492 in weight room equipment. We'll continue the project through next school year. Also looking at just modifying a little bit with the paint scheme, just on the size, because technically the weight room has already received a new paint job with the remodeling that has been done. But I want to kind of touch and personalize it just a little bit. As you said, I'll be out painting again. All right, so library area will also receive a new roof coat. We did experience a little bit of a leak as a result of this weekend's rains. So that's the reason why we need that roof coat to be done as soon as possible. Out in Cliff, two shade structures will be installed, hopefully by the start of the school year. You can kind of see the, if you scroll down Ben or scroll back up, that's the roof structure, or at least that's the design of the roof structure that they're gonna want to install in the entryway. All right, if you go back up. Roof repair to the Kinder slash 5th grade and 6th grade wing and the computer lab. The computer lab just sustained a lot of leaks this past winter. And, you know, last spring with the onset of the heavy rainfalls that were received out there. So we'll be looking to do that as well. Still waiting for J3 also to confirm when they can get on site to complete the job, to begin the job. They also received $32,168 in weight room equipment and a brand-new paint scheme. If you can kind of see up on the top left, that was their old weight room, or that was the weight room that they've had for numerous years. And down on the bottom right, so I'm quite proud of it, just because we completely did a new paint scheme, had the students involved to put up the logo in the background, just all the colors there. I know we're, I'm used to seeing red and black, you know, but I like it. I'm really, really proud of it. I know you can't see up close, but the flooring also is black, that's back then, so it's pretty dark. And I know that they're quite proud of it out in Cliff. Baseball field received another load of infield material and installed gravel into their courtyard at Cliff Campus. Southwest Hazard completed a mold inspection to the inside of the walls. There was continued, I used to express a concern, even though we've done twice, biennial, I guess you could say, mold inspections done, but that's just to the air itself, air sampling. So we actually, what I had to do is contact the Southwest Hazard out of El Paso to actually punch a hole in the wall and do an actual sampling of inside the walls. And personally, we were met with a negative result. And that's to include the kindergarten classroom that was in concern and also the girls' basketball coaches' office. So we're glad to show those results. Fox Field, we planted trees, that's where I just went right now, went to go water the trees. I ran out there just because we didn't receive the rain, I'm joking, but we planted a couple of trees. We're looking to install new track surfaces next fall. You'd be amazed at the price of track, and just, just the add color is outrageous. Because I didn't want to do white, I wanted to do navy blue, I wanted to do something different. So we kind of compromised, even though it's not really compromised, it's hopefully somewhat different. What you see right there is they're gonna throw in a little bit of blue on the transitions and the changes just to say, hey, it's slightly different, because I didn't want it to just go all the way across white track, just because that's the cheapest color we can find, I guess. To the annex, the annex will be included in our GW Stout HVAC project. Our maintenance shop received a new metal roof because it happened to blew off last summer. Central office will also receive a new roof coat. Vehicles, I'm sure you've heard, hopefully even heard or hopefully noticed, we come across two Ford, two new Ford Expeditions for student travel and staff travel. Again, Mrs. Berus, I know she's in one right now on her way. She's specifically asked for that one again. We've also received a new delivery truck for Silver High School Ag Department. We have the Super Duty, new delivery truck, because we desperately needed one. And we're currently waiting for two Ford Transits for our tech department. We have yet to receive word that they are in production, but they are guaranteed. It's kind of hard to say guarantee when actually being built and having been handed over to you. But they're, they get our word that they are ours, we've already sent appeals for them. So once we receive word that they're in production, hopefully we'll get those over to our tech department. I know they're excited, I know Ben's excited to put vinyl wrapping all over it, do something snazzy. Something's gonna happen with them, they're just not gonna be printing white. And we're also looking and excited to receive two new activity buses, also waiting for those to be built. Last word last week was that they're gonna be in production, hopefully by June. They are saying that they'll be on our lot by September, so I'm hoping by, you know, November, December, just be realistic, because, you know, once production goes from one place, then they gotta put on the ACs and then put on USB ports. Mr. Hawkins insisted they were gonna put Wi-Fi in there, everything else. So we're looking, well, looking forward to those new activity buses to meet the needs of our district.
You gotta wrap them too.
Yeah. So I stand before you, if you have any questions regarding facilities, projects, upcoming projects.
Any questions?
Though we, though we do appreciate the rainfall, the monsoons that we had last year. I know we possibly look forward to continued rain, I know we do. But that also brings on the onset of additional weeds and growth. So if any of you are more than willing to come out and help us cut weeds, we appreciate it. We'll give you all of the gear you would need to feel safe and do anything.
Thank you, Mr. Oaxaca.
And thank you, community, for sending you. You're patient, thank you.
You don't have any driver's stuff?
I wish. Not currently.
Not currently. Okay, so nothing on bus drivers, like speed drivers?
No, no.
All right. These are all action items coming up. So items to consideration approval of the Silver Consolidated School District 2023, 2024 fiscal year budget as presented by Michelle McCain during our work session. So I have a motion. Motion by Dr. Diaz, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Thank you, Michelle, for all that hard work you're in. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of permanent cash transfer. Consideration and approval of permanent cash transfer as presented earlier in our board meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Flores, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the 2023-2024 increment schedules as presented in your board packet. Do I have a motion? Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Thank you for your work on those as well, and bringing them up as much as you can to show people that we value their time and appreciate their work. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the 2023-2024 salary schedules as presented in your board packet. Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Flores, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the Carl Perkins Grant as presented by Associate Superintendent Cindy Barris, and in your board packet, do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the Next Generation Fund as presented by Associate Superintendent Cindy Barris, and available in your board packet, do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the Innovation Zone Grant as presented in your board packet. Do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second? Okay, second by Mr. McMillan, all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the 2023-2024 school bus contracts. Do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Flores, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And just to confirm, the bid was approved in the finance part, right? Yes, it should be, yes, but I just would like, that one's not on there, but it should be, we awarded the bid for Freedom of Southwest, just for the record, during the budget finance purchasing exception. All right, open public comment. We did not receive any further requests?
Go back.
Okay, thank you. Future meetings and proposed agenda items, our next finance committee meeting on June 15th, next work session and regularly scheduled court meeting is June 19th. Hopefully, that works for everyone, I know Mr. McMillan won't be able to make it, we just need to make sure that we have a forum. And then the law conference is coming up June 1st through the 3rd, the leadership retreat, that we also wanted to do a board retreat, is on drop July 13th through the 15th. Lisa has made arrangements for the board already, so let us know if you can confirm that. And then the proposed date for the July meeting, we just want to check with everyone's schedules to kind of get ahead of them. The best date for administration would be July 24th, that is one Monday later than usual, so if you could check your calendars and then confirm with us by next month, if that would work, that would be greatly appreciated. Tons of activities going on throughout the district, from Silver High to Senior Sunset, which is going on now, might even be over, they might have finished with the, um, scholarship night for seniors, graduation is this coming Thursday, the Silver High football field is like starting at 7:30, and then we've got finals coming up next week for the rest of the school. Cliff's graduation, we will be up there on Friday to celebrate with them. And La Plata is having an eighth grade promotion this week, on the 17th, at 9:00 AM, and that's something relatively new, but I know we're excited about that. Executive session, the board may like to go into executive session for reasons committed in the Mexican Open Meetings Act, CMA 1978, Section 10-12-1, 81 through 9. Mr. Hawkins, do we have any room to go into executive session this evening? Yes? Would like to?
To you?
Who? Are we? Mike, are you there? Ellen, here we are? Michelle, you there? Okay. Well, we'll do that next one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that'll be as long. So we will not go into executive session, and so I look for a motion for adjournments. Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second? Second by Mr. McMillan. Lisa, will you come through?
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Khan? Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:57.